Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to today's board meeting. Roll call, please, Mr. Duro.
This is Larry.
I'm here.
Mr. Bennington.
Here.
Mrs. Yubin.
Here.
Mrs. Dowd.
Here.
Mr. Bowman.
Here. Roll call has been taken. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any motion to adopt the proposed agenda?
So moved.
Second. Okay.
Any questions, discussions?
We fought for it.
I think she got, she beat me. I'm a quieter in the morning.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bennington.
Yes.
Mrs. Larry.
Yes.
Mrs. Yubin.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowd.
Yes.
Mr. Bowman.
Yes. Motion carries. This takes us to the superintendent's report. Mr. Hassler.
Yep, thank you. And before we begin, first, I'd like to welcome treasurer Randy Druryer. This is his first full, this is his first meeting, running the show. So Randy, thank you. And I know he's been very busy the last couple of weeks, getting to know staff, getting into all the buildings, and even attending a couple rotary meetings, and really plugging in well. So we're very grateful that he's here, and he's made a great first impression. So anybody who'd like to meet him, I'm sure just a phone call away or an email. And I know he's very open to discussing schools and finances, and certainly Perrysburg. So, so, welcome, Randy. So today, what we wanted to do is kind of do a deep dive into our, our facilities, and some of the issues that we have surrounding it. So I'll open up the presentation, and we'll begin. So we have a couple of folks that are with us, and I'll just take a moment to introduce them. First is Dave Sarah. Dave is, for those of you that are on the board and in the community know Dave. Dave's been an architect with the Collaborative for a number of years, and has been very instrumental in not only the Hall Prairie project, but also many of the renovations and other projects that have taken place across our district. So he knows where all the skeletons are in terms of our facilities, and we're great, we're grateful that he's here. Next is Matt Kriegel. We asked Matt to be part of this program, to help us with this, this next phase and next conversation that we're having. Matt is an outstanding teacher, and now has a little bit more time on his hands, since he's not coaching, but somebody who understands process, someone who understands vision, long-term planning, and, you know, what it takes to get there. And so we're very excited that he agreed to lend his talents to this. And then James Mapus, James is our operations director, certainly has a great working knowledge of not only the buildings and the operations that's happening inside those buildings, where our, you know, strong points are, but also the weak points, and the things that he's trying to address. His background in transportation is also very helpful with really talking about the impact that our current growth has with our attendance patterns at our elementaries. And then finally, Brooke Price, Assistant Superintendent, who's been instrumental in pulling this presentation together, and really giving it the bones and the meat to make it possible. So, so we'll begin, and we wanted to begin this a little differently, maybe than we have in the past. And that is, we wanted to begin with identifying, so what's the problem? So we have more students due to more developments in the city and the townships. So not only do we draw from the city of Perrysburg, but also from Middleton and Perrysburg townships. So that's important to keep in mind, that there's, there's three communities that are feeding into the Perrysburg School District. We have older buildings. Four of our buildings are aged between 40 and 60. And you can see Frank is 64, Toth is 68, the Junior High 57, and Woodland in 42. This building, the Commodore Building, is 90 years old. And so we know that we have buildings that are older. And if you are a person between 40 and 60 years old, you know that there takes extra care and maintenance than there used to be, and that's the same with our buildings. We also understand that the community doesn't want to pay any more taxes than it has to. And that's something that we have to keep in mind as we talk about our facilities and the future. Elementary school boundaries have created kind of a patchwork quilt of attendance areas, and we'll talk about how that is, and what the future holds. And now we have portables that are being used at the high school. We're still waiting for the, the computer chips that all the automotive places are waiting for to arrive. And that's still creating quite a carousel in, in the high school, where we have more than 11 teachers that are on carts, moving to those open classrooms wherever they can find them. And then all of our four element, and all but Toth of our elementaries certainly has a portable classroom in play right now. So it wasn't that long ago that we emptied those out, and we're beginning to fill those back up. And that's important. So what we want to do is identify the problems, and we kind of outline what those are. We wanted to talk about Perrysburg Schools today, and, and what's, you know, because there's many people that haven't had children in Perrysburg Schools that might pay attention to this presentation, and will want to know, well, what is happening since my, my children have left? Because they're stakeholders in this process. We want to look at the enrollment history and the future. The city land use plans, which was a presentation that was done to this board, we wanted to take a look at some of the, some of the population projections from that document, because it's another outside source that is telling us what may happen with enrollment. And those projections actually were slightly higher than the ones that we projected with Plant Moran, and we'll talk about that. The elementary attendance areas, review of the current building needs, because that's important as we move forward, keeping the buildings current, keeping the buildings, you know, up and running at their ages. Enrollment projections and facility capacities, current building land overviews, our buildings, our properties, what does expansion look like on any of those, and just that information. Summary and the next steps. So that's kind of what we wanted to go through this morning. So I wanted to begin with looking back. And back in 2012, some may remember, that the board formed a, a task force, a committee, saying, you know, we know the community is growing, we know that we're going to have to do something about it, so let's come up with a plan to do just that. So you may recall back in 2012 that we pulled in parents and business leaders and, and residents to begin to talk about this. We had a support team that helped support them as they began to wrestle with the questions that, that they were faced with the district. So we had 16 team members. They devoted over 320 hours, over 10 months, to research on their own, what should be the next step. That committee, that work led us to the recommendation for Hall Prairie, if you recall. And then in 2017, we opened it. So from 2012, forming the committee, to, you know, opening the building, it went from, it was five years. So that's something to keep in mind as we begin to talk through this. In, in 2028, we had started this process again, where we pulled together a list of community members, city leaders, parents, and, and staff, to begin to talk about the future of Perrysburg Schools and what's happening in our districts. This is just one year after opening Hall Prairie. So we were already beginning to think about, as with a building that was just open for one year, about the next step, the next conversation that has to happen. And that was our Vision 2020. So planning is, is something that we always do, it's something that we think about. And, and now we're at a place where we need to take that conversation that we began in 2018, update it, which you'll begin to hear that today, and, and then I think in the next board meeting, talk about maybe putting together a committee to begin to talk about, how do we solve those problems that, that we've identified for us as a, as a community? So at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Kriegel, and has a couple of things to go through.
Morning. I, I think I can offer some unique perspective to where we are right now. Unfortunately, the reason I can offer unique perspective is because I'm really old. Been here a long time. I got to the high school the year it opened. You know you've been around for a while. If you still call that place the new high school, it's 20 years old. I think Ray's probably the only one that still does that, but for you, for some people, it's still the new high school. Walking in here this morning, I, I met up with Ray, and we were coming through the door, and he said to me, did you ever think 20 years ago, you and I would be sitting at a board meeting, talking? And no, I haven't, I wouldn't have thought that. But I've kind of been around through the growth of Perrysburg Schools, and seen where we were when, when that high school was built, and what that area looked like, and what it looks like now. So it's kind of unique. The thing that has always, to me, stood out about Perrysburg Schools is the number of programs that we offer for kids, whether, you know, they're pre-K all the way up to high school, the music, the band, the athletics, the speech and debate team at our, at the high schools, one of the best in the state. We offer a lot of things for the kids in the, the community to do. And most schools that offer that number of things, it's hard to carry that on for 20 years. And not only have we carried that on, you know, we've gotten better at it over a 20-year period. So, you know, first, talking about the, our recognition. We've been recognized by U.S. News as being one of the top school districts, high schools in the country. You know, our, our, our music programs have been designated by NAMM as being, you know, some of the top programs in the country. One of them that stands out to me, being the former football coach, we're the number nine district for athletes out of 609 in the state of Ohio. We've got anywhere from rowing to, you know, obviously, football, basketball, baseball. Our female athletes have a huge number of sports to choose from. We're number two in Northwest Ohio, so we cover a lot of bases with that. Number 120, number 21 district out of 608 in the, the state of Ohio. Number 26 for teachers. Number 33 as far as safety in, in the state of Ohio. And to me, what stands out about that is some of the changes that we've made over time to make our school buildings more safe. And finally, number 37 out of 608, as far as best places to teach in the state of Ohio. We've been designated with the Purple Star Distinction for recognizing students' commitment to the military. And you go into the high school, down by the gym, there's a wall, a former student who was an Eagle Scout did, where they recognize everybody who's been through military service in the school. And it always amazes me the number of students we have, number one, that are going into the military. Being the football coach, I've had several kids over the years that I've had to write letters of recommendation for them to go to military academies, and a lot of parents who are military parents at our school. So huge distinction for us. Our PBIS system, Positive Behavior, is something, one of those things we started a few years ago, and being one of the teachers that's been around for a while, I thought, is this really necessary? Is this something we need to do? And now we've been through it for a number of years, and when you have high school kids come in, and they know what Jacket Way means, and they can put a, a description with what their behavior should be, and what the consequences are. I think it was a great move for our district to move forward like that. Our STEM programs and science programs are something that we had the vision with to move forward in Perrysburg Schools. We're one of the top STEM schools in the area. You know, Hall Prairie was obviously built so that it could accommodate the STEM program. I can remember years ago, with the index score, you know, the, the school rating, and how the school rating system has gone, there was one point where, you know, we had been excellent for a long time, and, and a lot of people took for granted, well, we're just going to be excellent. They just kind of rubber stamp things and move forward. And as teachers, we knew what we put into being excellent, and how hard it was to stay excellent. And then we went through the recession, and there, we had to cut back on some things and tighten down, and you started to think, are we still going to be able to stay excellent? And then the state went through a series where they made it almost impossible for you to stay excellent. If you were excellent, then you had to continue getting better, or else you didn't stay excellent. And I remember sitting in the meeting, listening to all this with Tom, talking the first day of school, thinking, they're setting us up for failure. There's no way we're going to be able to pull this off. And if you look at this, this graphic up on the board, we not only have stayed excellent, we have continuously gotten better since 2015. And if you look back to 2001, when I got here, that has been a constant. We've been an excellent school. Oops, sorry. $21.8 million in scholarships awarded. Years ago, when we would have graduation, they would announce all the scholarships for all the seniors. And it started to get into, you sat there for an hour and listened to them name off all the scholarships, and since then, with the number of students we have, you'd be there all day. We have a, a guidance counselor, Mrs. Chek, who's in charge of scholarship money, and making sure that kids get awarded scholarships. And I think we just do a great job with Perrysburg Schools for setting kids up for success, and making sure that they, they get that help when they can. So just an unbelievable number for the number of scholarships we've been awarded. And this graphic right here, I think it's interesting, if you combine A and B, you know, we're a pub, a big public school district. It's hard to keep everybody happy all at one time. And if you combine A and B, 84% of the people who responded in our community are very satisfied with how Perrysburg Schools functions. You know, I live in another school district. I've been a part of other school districts. That's hard to do right there, to keep 84% of the public happy. Trust me, I was the football coach, it's that easy.
Thank you, Mr. Kriegel. And we'll turn it over to, to Mrs. Price, who will talk a little bit about enrollment projections and, and history.
Yeah, good morning. So this slide's interesting. I'm going to have a few slides just going over projected trends with enrollment. But this slide shows kind of that snowball effect. So if you look at the current seventh graders, that class is at 417 as of September. When they were in kindergarten, they were at 351. Current sixth graders, 408, when they were in kindergarten, 324. And if you look down that slide, you can really see that trend, and how those numbers snowball throughout the years. I also would like to point out with the kindergarten class, they're currently at 367, which is already higher than the first grade class this year. So we can anticipate those snowball trends will continue. As Tom likes to say, if this was your portfolio, you would be happy. But these are our projected trends from 1999 through today. So you can see that we've had a fairly steady and quite a significant jump since 1999, with our September enrollment numbers. So since 2015-16, we've grown by 571 students. This is larger than the current size of Fort Meigs. So let that sink in for a little bit. We've essentially added an elementary school over those years. Current Fort Meigs population's at 559. And then we pulled a few slides from the study done by Plant Moran and Chris Vogel, and this is a projection study. So these look at demographic trends. You can look at 2018 through 2028, and you can see those projected peak enrollments. It's taking K4 numbers and looking at the potential plus, or the, the potential additions of students through the years of 2028. So you can see, it's projected that we could acquire quite a few students by that time. On May 4th, if you remember, the, there were members of the City Planning and Zoning Committee, along with Edge Consulting, they came and did do a presentation for the board. For anyone in the community that would like to view that presentation, it is on our YouTube from the May 4th meeting, so I do encourage people to look through that. And some of the things they talked about were just, again, those current trends. So if you look at over the, the past 20 years, we really had that moderate growth, which is still fairly significant. And then they gave really three avenues of what could happen over the next 20 years. They did a low-growth projection, a moderate-growth projection, and then a high-growth projection. This is the developable, developable land. So residentially, we could accommodate up to 7,596 residents. And you can see it broken down by the city and township areas. And obviously, some of those are going to be students. So we can reasonably project that we're going to continue to grow. Again, by 2040, if we did follow that high-growth trend, we're looking at 8,000 additional people. And again, going back to the previous slide, looking at that land that is able to be developed, the amount of residents that could accommodate based on the current zoning. And then, we just wanted to point out this slide. They did conduct a community survey, and we are really a driving force within the community as a school system, as one of the elements that really shaped that quality of life for Perrysburg. So now we're going to turn it over to James. He's going to talk a little bit more about the developable land.
Good morning. So as you can see from this slide, this is the city limits of the district, 3,271 acres that are still able to be developed. But keep in mind, that's only here in the city, so we also have Middleton Township, that, you know, obviously, we can expand as well, and we're seeing a lot of growth in currently. The next slide shows where all of our elementary schools and high school and junior high buildings are. And you can see where the new growth is. There's really nothing other than HPI and the high school over in that area of town. So everything, all the students currently, once we go to the next map, you'll see kind of where those children are being bused. So when you look at the Fort Meigs area, you see two little areas that are the red, which is Toth. So that's kind of in the area, if anyone knows where Co-Cord is. You turn off Fort Meigs, and you go back in there, and in the morning, as a bus driver, the first time I remember that I subbed back in there, you go back, and there's kids standing at every corner, and it's like, uh, which group is mine? And it's funny, because one time I actually turned the lights on, and the kid was like, eh, nope, next one up. Like, even they know, like, eh, he doesn't know what he's doing. But, you know, it does get confusing, confusing in there, and so that's an area where those kids would all go to Toth. Same thing with Woodland. You know, we have that big area, if you look just kind of to the south of the, the map. And everyone thinks, wow, that's a huge area going to Woodland. But keep in mind that there's only one bus that services that area, and there's currently only 38 kids riding on that bus. So it's kind of an important piece of information, because a lot of people look at that, and they're like, wow, I can't believe they're sending that many kids to Woodland. It's just a lot of farmland in that area. So now we're going to turn it over to Dave Sarah.
Good morning. I think we'll change the discussion a little bit, and getting a little bit more of data, and a little bit more of the planning that we've, we've done previously and updated here recently. So just to remind everybody, back in 2017, the district hired then architects, or TDA architects, to come in and assess all your buildings. We wanted to use OFCC as a baseline, so all of these costs that you see are based off of OFCC guidelines, which they put out each year and update in terms of cost for renovation, cost for new schools, things like that. So what you see kind of in the, in the, in the peach and yellow were those costs in, in 2017, 2018. We wanted to update those for, for current costs as well, so we're talking about current data. So in the blue there is what the current cost for renovating all of your schools would be in today's dollars. So we did this for each of your schools. Tom's going to click through all of these. We've got some summary kind of slides at the end that we'll come back to. This slide was really, back in 2005, you did a similar assessment that we did in 2017, so you, the district had done this before. So you'll see in 2005, really some of the big numbers to pay attention to, OFCC says, if it costs more than 60% or 64% to renovate a school versus build new, they're going to push you to build new. So you can see in 2005, based off what the renovation cost would have been at that time, you had two schools, the Junior High and Frank Elementary, that were higher than that 60-plus percentage. So at that time, should you have received OFCC funding, they would have said, you've got to knock those schools down and rebuild. You can't keep those, it's not worth investing dollars in. I guess the good news is, as we looked at 2018, and even in 2021, all the PI dollars, and all of the infrastructure, and all of the kind of continual upkeep and maintenance that you've been doing, have really drastically improved those numbers. So from 2005 to 2018, you went from having two facilities that were really in not very good shape, and really spent dollars wisely to improve those numbers, to get those down within a reasonable range. This chart just, again, looks at all of that information kind of combined from 2018, 2021. We started to look at some, your classrooms, which we'll talk a little bit more, and about capacities of school. We also broke those costs down into intermediate and secondary needs. There were a lot of things that OFCC recommends that you don't necessarily need to do as a district. You know, you don't need to replace every parking lot, you don't need to add emergency generators to every school. So a lot of that was figuring that calculation. So we said, we should be smart about it, and say, what do you really need to move forward with? And that's really that intermediate category there, that $45 million, which was totaling what the kind of deferred maintenance costs were for all of your facilities. Back in 2018 as well, we kind of went through and looked at every single one of your schools to talk about what are some potential options for future growth? What are the pros and cons to kind of each of your schools that you have here today? Frank is the first one we went through. Again, we list the pros and cons, that, you know, you've got a lot of neighborhood-connected schools, which is great. You've got nice street scale, efficient use of the site. You know, some limitations there are, you just don't have a whole lot of acreage to expand. You're kind of really locked in, there's a lot of congestion, especially off-boundary school, off-south boundary, I'm sorry. The architecture's pretty dated and old, and needs updating. And there's a lot of deferred maintenance. You know, in terms of Frank alone, almost about $6 million just in deferred maintenance that you would need on Frank. This was a updated graphic that we did for all of your schools. We went through and started to analyze what kind of spaces are in your, each of the buildings, what are the trailers, classroom trailers that you have, what are they supplying? And really trying to understand your growing special needs population as well. So you'll see all the classrooms there in green are maybe more of a traditional classroom. In the orangish color are the special needs classrooms that we've identified. And you'll see a graph later that kind of calculates all of that and summarizes that for you, to understand that that population is growing, you're not able to put as many students in a classroom as you would a traditional classroom, thus making your, your availability of space even more in trouble. So going back to Frank, we did look at where you could potentially build. So we tried to identify some potential building zones, you know, potentially back by where the trailers are, you could potentially remove those, add on some additions there. Tried to look at, if you're going to be adding on to any of these schools, you're going to need to expand other support services, like cafeteria, things like that. So that's what some of these bubbles start to identify. And again, just kind of another view, looking at kind of the back of the building, again, what space available you have. You'll see what that impacts. It starts to impact, you know, a lot of your playground areas, a lot of your playfields, should you try to move forward with some type of expansion on this site. Toth did a similar study, again, really, again, very nice, you know, connected to the neighborhood, has kind of separate parent bus drop-off, you know, really located in a very nice mature neighborhood with trees, close to parks. Again, though, we start to get the limitations for any type of growth on this site, as it's very tight. Want to flip it, Tom? Did a similar analysis, again, of, of just spaces within a Toth, so you start to understand what are traditional classrooms, kindergarten, special needs, and then other support spaces. And then where some areas of growth can be. Again, maybe, as, as, again, if you added on to these, you, you would need additional gym space, cafeteria space. We started to look at where some gym expansion could potentially go, where cafeteria dining expansion can go, and then potentially where a classroom addition can go. Again, that starts to impact some of the other kind of site amenities you have there today. Woodland, pros about that is you've got the most acreage. So Woodland has about 22 acres, compared to about half that, or less, with all of the other elementary schools. It's got good traffic flow, good bus parent drop-off separation, you're located, you know, right next to Woodland Park. So really good site, really good building. The deferred maintenance was about $7 million on that, on that project, on that building. But does have the potential for some future growth, potentially, should the district want to move in that direction. Again, the analysis of, of the classroom, along with the trailers, and what those are being used for today. And then you've got a lot of expansion opportunities here. So you could see there's a large classroom expansion zone that, that could happen here, without really affecting a lot of the site amenities. Again, you'd probably have to do something with the, the trailers, but there are some good opportunities here at Woodland to potentially... but there are some good opportunities here at Woodland to potentially add on, should you want to go in that direction. Fort Megs, again, you know, in the neighborhoods, which is really great, separate parent and bus drop-off. Some room to expand. You do have trailers in use and that are almost full on this site as well. Again, just in a neighborhood, so you're going to have that congestion with parking and traffic like you kind of do with all of the other elementary schools. About $6.9 million of deferred maintenance at Fort Megs currently. Similar study. So you see the trailers have three classrooms and one special ed classroom, and then all of the other kind of distinctive spaces in the building. From a growth area, you do have a little bit more opportunities, but again, you see what that kind of affects. So you have some zones for expansion. If you needed to expand the cafeteria or the gym area, you would start to get in again to some of your site amenities, reworking some playground areas, reworking some parking lot areas as well, but there are some options on this site. Junior High, a lot of acreage, so you really use the site efficiently. Is a lot of congestion, especially with parent pickup and bus drop-off. We know that's definitely a concern. There's always the identity piece with the junior high of where the front door is. I think we've tried to correct that a little bit with the secured vestibule, but I think that still is out there. And the building, while it has good bones, does have a lot of deferred maintenance, does need a lot of upgrades. About $15 million worth of deferred maintenance for the junior high. Again, did a similar study with the classroom counts. We've got two floors here at the junior high, so the next slide gets the second floor as well, but you see the breakdown of classroom and uses. And then we've talked about a number of things here, you know, classroom zones. You've got a couple of different areas, one where the trailers are today. There's definitely some room there. Potential classroom addition, music addition, kind of off your existing auditorium music space. And then the cafeteria expansion as well, should you need to do that. There's opportunities there. Again, it would affect parking and drop-off and some of the other areas, but it seems like that would be manageable. High school, again, I think if someone said that's your newest building, but it's 20 years old, or it was the newest building at 20 years old. Very large site, was planned for very well. So, you know, when this project was designed, there was always the planned additions of additional gymnasium, which you built, and then additional classrooms, which you haven't built yet. But there are those infrastructure and all of that planning has already been kind of planned for 20 years ago to make that happening, knowing growth was coming. Again, the just kind of separation of spaces between the floor plans on the first and second floor. And then some options, again, that what we're shown is the classroom expansion zone. That's where, when the project was designed 20 years ago. All the utilities are out of the way, all the site utilities, grading, all of that stormwater are out of that zone area. So perfect opportunity to potentially tie off to that classroom piece there, add some additional classrooms. Your toilets counts are for the most part configured. Your hallways are wide enough. So we've done a lot of that code research and all of that was planned for wisely 20-plus years ago, knowing growth was coming. Hall Prairie, you know, this is the newest school, so we, there really aren't a whole lot of issues, no deferred maintenance. Again, did the kind of study of the classrooms, but did want to point out that this does have the potential for expansion. Again, when this was designed, there were additional classrooms on the ends of two of the academic wings, should you need that. So again, just doing the classroom breakdown. And then on the site plan, you'll see where there were the planned additions for some additional classrooms, should you ever need that at Hall Prairie. These next couple charts just start to kind of go over the enrollment and what the earlier study by Clint Moran and Chris Vogel were suggesting in terms of back in 2018, kind of where your enrollment were for the K through four schools and where that was going. You'll see in, you know, 2021, we were projecting 2094 students. You're actually above that this year. You're about 21, 33, 100 students in the K through four. You're starting to run out of spaces. I think everyone has talked about earlier. There's very little space available. Most of the trailers that were emptied for Hall Prairie are filled back up. So this might suggest you start to look at the need to add some potential trailers. Toth is the only school at this point that doesn't have any. So that would be probably the next logical option.
You said Hall Prairie. We don't have trailers at Hall Prairie.
I'm sorry, except Hall Prairie.
Yeah, yeah. Hall Prairie, the next slide, so you're thinking ahead.
So Hall Prairie is, as Tom said, the next slide here. 2018, we're around 876 students. As of this year, you're 802, so a little bit below the projections. And I think that's the, a little bit of the COVID effect. But you see the capacity of Hall Prairie without any of the additions that we showed as alternates. About 1,041 students. So this was suggesting you potentially wouldn't get there to 2023, 2024. And once you got there, that those numbers would potentially start to drop back down to get you under what the building was designed for. The junior high, 2018, 843 students. You're 836 students as of September of this year. So again, tracking a little bit lower than what those projections were. Those projections at that time were talking about that the numbers would increase, take a little bit of a dip in '23, and then rise once you looked out to '24, '25, which would maybe suggest you might have to start moving students back into some of the four trailers that you have out there today that I think are partially being used. And then the high school, that was designed for, you know, 1,600 kids when it was built 20 years ago. Even looking back at 2018, you're already at that max capacity. You're about 1,718 students as of September of this. So again, tracking up, not quite, tracking up quite as aggressively as what we thought. But again, COVID, I think, took a little bit of a toll on that. We did put in some of the trailers, so you've got six classroom trailers that as soon as we get some final pieces and parts, will be up and running. And then this was starting to talk about as those, as the enrollment starts to grow, there's probably the need to put in additional trailers out there to meet that growing kind of enrollment at the high school, potentially two a year for five or six years looking out. So this is a chart that, again, just kind of goes back through and summarizes all of your schools, what the original design capacity of those schools were, what your enrollments were, what the trailers add on to it. I didn't put the high school on this, but that, you know, gets you, you know, another six classrooms out there. So another 150, 200 students. And then you can start to see the deltas. And then, you know, in the final category there, if you needed to put on potential additions to Hall Prairie, that would get you up to 1,122 students. Enrollment data didn't look like it ever showed you need that, but, you know, the additions at the high school would get you to 2,000 plus, depending on how large you built that potential addition sometime in the future. This chart kind of summarizes the difference in between your general classrooms versus your special needs classroom spaces to really start to talk about when you look at a square footage, just straight square footage, you're averaging about 20% of your square footage in each of your schools are used for special needs programs. And then if you look at your total number of classrooms, not from a square footage, but just from a count standpoint, about 25% of your classrooms are being used for special needs.
Yeah, and I could just pause for a moment. Part of the reason why we highlight that is certainly we're grateful that parents trust us to educate all their students. And parents of special needs students are certainly very selective, very concerned about the care and love of their students. So we're grateful that they're choosing us to be the school district that services their students. The reason we talk about this is not to, you know, use that as an excuse, but we have people who say, you know, there's so many classrooms, and if you take that classroom and you multiply it by 25 or 30, that should be your capacity. And what we try to remind people is that when you have students with special needs who have different requirements in terms of how many students can be in a classroom with a teacher, that changes that formula. So some of those folks that have been around a while say, wait, I know that there are, you know, 20, 28 classrooms there and doing quick math. So this is why we include that, so people understand that, you know, things have changed since we opened that building when schools frankly didn't do a very good job in the 1950s of considering, you know, all the students. And today, we're grateful that we do, so.
So we wanted to take a look at, you know, I think there has been some maybe discussion and some topics that have come up about should you potentially look at two high schools. So just did a quick kind of study of your current high, your junior high enrollment of, you know, 419, 427 and eighth grade students and what that would mean in terms of dividing those students up into potentially two high schools. And you see the class sizes really are very small. And then when you take another look at kind of what the neighboring school districts look like, how that would fall into it. So potentially, you'd have two 800-student high schools if you'd went to that two-high-school approach and you could see kind of where that ranks you in terms of your surrounding districts, you know, somewhere in between a Fremont Ross and a Southview in terms of, you know, the amount of students that might be in those two high schools. Some other topics I think that have come up in the past are, there's some available space and maybe some big-box stores. And could you potentially use some of that space for classroom and other educational space rather than portable classrooms? I think along with that comes transportation logistical issues. How do you get students back and forth in a timely manner? There's a number of building code challenges that you would have to, you know, undertake as well. So would almost be cost prohibitive. You'd have to completely change the use of a big-box store into an educational environment, have to redo the site. So you'd have all of those challenges that just wouldn't make that a very easy or cost-effective solution.
And one of the things is Dave and I talked about this option, you know, kind of exploring it. When you think about a portable classroom, there's six classrooms that are outside the high school door. So those students, you know, walk across the sidewalk and enter those classrooms. And then they come back for their other five classes and lunch. If you have a, if you have a bank of classrooms in a big-box store, for example, or at a satellite location, and if you, you almost have to include a, make it a small school that's in and of itself because you can't have students being bused in the middle of the day just for one class across town because the travel time would knock out the period before and the period after. There's no lunch there, so it would shut down during those periods. So there's a lot of, when you think about it that way, you'd almost have to create a separate school, which then drives up the operational costs because you would have to have lunch. You'd have to have all the things that those students need if they're going to stay at that location. And right now, we're just adding an appendix to each of our buildings, which really keeps our operational costs down. So Dave did a great job of kind of exploring that with us.
And I think that one of the last topics was, you know, Hall Prairie. And when it opened, was it at capacity? What was it designed for? You know, and that building was designed, I think, we used a lot of terminology of 900 students. That was at 80% efficiency of the classroom. So that was assuming 24, 25 students per classroom. As a district, of course, you can add additional students to those classrooms. So that's where I think a little bit of the discrepancy was coming in at. So Hall Prairie is definitely, was designed more than capable of enrolling and supporting your current enrollment and even, as you saw earlier, looking out to your future enrollments. You'd have to go up to like a 90% efficiency classroom. Still definitely makes those classrooms very flexible, designed the way they were always intended to be used, but you could add those additional students to get up to that 1,041 students without having to put on any type of additional classrooms like we had originally designed in there.
I have one quick question. Is it appropriate now or? Well, I'll just ask Dave. In all the pictures, you drew little circles around areas where you could add, for each school where you could add support facilities like cafeterias and stuff. But I didn't see that in the high school. What would we do as we?
If we didn't show it, we've looked at that, Gretchen. So yes, we've talked about an expansion. There are opportunities there to expand the cafeteria area. We know that needs to happen. I think we've also talked about performing arts. There potentially would need to be some potential expansion there as those programs continue to grow. So if that graphic didn't show that, we have looked at that. And I think we feel confident there's plenty of opportunity on the site to get you a classroom expansion, cafeteria dining expansion, and then potential performing art expansion, should you want to go in that direction. And parking. We've looked at parking as well because we know kind of maxed out parking-wise out there. And with additional students coming on, you're going to need more and more parking. And there are some different approaches you can do to get, to gain some additional efficiencies and additional parking spaces out there.
Okay, thank you.
So one of the things that I think as we talk about, you know, the challenges ahead, we have to keep in mind that we have to have academics be part of the conversation and we would encourage it to be what drives the decisions around the decisions that we're going to make in the future. When we talked about making the change in adding a fifth and sixth-grade building, if you recall back in 2012 when we kicked that off, there was a deep dive in how do fifth and sixth-grade buildings perform versus other types of grade configurations? So, you know, as we move forward, we want to make sure that we're keeping in mind that we want to make decisions that meet our needs academically. The space serves as a function of our academic goals. And so we don't want to lose sight of that and finding that plan. So kind of taking us back to, so what's the problem? You know, more students due to more development in the city and township. So we must plan for the immediate future, and that's what we're doing now. This is always a little bit tricky because people say, you know, you know it's coming. We know in 10 years, in 15 years, there's growth going to be there. But it's very rare for school districts to pass a bond issue for a school to sit empty for 10 or 12 years. So there's this very delicate balance that boards have to walk between, you know, managing that growth to a point where we need to make that commitment. Because if we really were to plan for the future, we would say, well, in 2040, we see what the city's projecting, so let's build those buildings now today. I don't think that would make a lot of sense. So what do we do in the meantime that makes sense for our academic needs and our student needs, but also for our community's needs in terms of being able to afford that? The older buildings, you've heard today about the dollar amounts. And we've done a really good job of managing what we have. But one of the problems is, is we need to continue to pay attention to some of those larger needs that we have, that we know that are out there. Solutions need to be balanced with the district needs and what the community is willing to pay. You can have an ideal plan that solves all of your problems today for the next 40 years. But you have to have a plan that the community is willing to pay for. So there's that balance that we have to walk. And elementary boundaries have created a patchwork. So next year, when we show this, when, if James comes back and shows, it's going to start to look like polka dots because with the new developments that are coming online, in the middle of those attendance areas, you're going to see, like you pointed out with McKinley Woods, more and more because we're trying to find the pockets where we can put kids right now. So it's going to start to look like chickenpox across the district. And that's not what we've done for the last 150 years. But it is where we're heading and we need to keep that in mind. And so this is a slide I know that Dave always likes to point out.
So what if, so what if nothing happens? So what if you keep on, there still are going to be costs to the district. You know, we talked about, and I think some of the charts showing the growing enrollment and the lack of space, which ultimately is going to result in buying some additional classroom portables. So kind of listed that, you know, the elementary schools already have, other than Toth, you'd potentially be looking at a couple of additional classrooms for Toth to deal with your rising K through four population. That might be about $360,000. The junior high, you've got a couple out there, but they're in pretty disrepair. So should you need to move into those, you would need to invest in some new siding, new roofing, new furniture, things like that. So we've allocated about $75,000 for those. Oh, you spent about $790,000 on the, on the six classrooms that are in at the high school. We know the next set of portables that needs to go in out there is going to require toilet facilities. We're at our maximum run right now of where those existing classroom trailers are to get to the inside of the building. Got about a 250-foot run. Once we start to add additional classroom trailers, you're going to be outside that. So you need to add a toilet bank of trailers plus additional classrooms. So we've tried to capture that, really looking out, you know, in a couple of years. That's why that number jumps up from the 790 to over a million as you're trying to account for that additional plumbing need. And then potentially six more somewhere in the future to, again, keep up with your growth at the high school. So about three and a half million dollars that you would be spending potentially, you know, over the next six or seven years if nothing happened with any of your facilities today.
Thanks, Dave. Thanks, Dave. So, um, and, and we'll kind of wrap up and open it up to discussion, but I think, I think the good news, because this is kind of, uh, you know, in two thousand and eighteen when we presented this and, and today, it's, it's kind of sobering to think about this. It's a lot to, to kind of think through. But I think the good news is we've been here before. We've been here before as a community. In, in two thousand and twelve, we were facing, you know, the challenges that, that we had and, and we said, you know what, let's look at the data, let's put people on it, let's begin to work the problem and we came up with a solution that the community endorsed. And every decade, going back to the nineteen thirties when the Cometer Building was built as the new high school, ninety years ago, every decade since that time, the district has either added a new building or additions to existing buildings every, every decade. With the exception of the nineteen forties because of World War Two, but in the nineteen fifties was the decade where we added two new buildings, the only one. So we played catch-up. So here we are in, in two thousand and twenty and, and, you know, and, and we're looking at that next phase of the future. So this isn't earth shattering news for this community, looking at it going back ninety years. So what we have to do is begin to have a conversation about what is that, how do we solve those next problems for us? And like I said, the good news is we've been here, we've done this and we've done a great job and the community has trusted us. And so we need to set out a process that is going to allow us to begin to have that dialogue, to begin to have that thoughtful planning, to come up with a plan that we want to present to the community in the future. We're building off of the work that we've done in, in two thousand and eighteen and that built off of the work that we were doing in two thousand and twelve. Um, so, so this is very strategic in a sense that we are looking back and looking forward at where we need to go. And so we didn't come here today and say, you need to build this, you need to do that. We identified the problems, the challenges and, and getting to the next steps. We certainly are giving you a lot to digest. We're proposing the next board meeting, let's, let's, you know, continue the conversation there. And, um, and then let's talk about how do we begin the process to address these questions? And, um, and, and I know people looking at this, it's, it's daunting to think about what Dave pointed out in terms of the existing buildings, challenges we have, the age of the buildings, the growth, but these are good problems to have. These are problems that we are a community that is on the move, a community where people want to be a part of this. And as the city, and not our words, but the city land use survey shows, the reason that that is happening is the schools. Schools are an engine, an economic engine to this community. So the dollars invested in our schools is returned because housing values, businesses, they all want to be a part of this vibrant community. And so we have a responsibility to take this seriously as we move forward. So, so it, it's, it's not, we're not talking about closing schools, we're not talking about ending programs and, and that's a great thing for us and we're grateful the community has put us into this place, but we've got this. We've been here, we know what needs to be done. Um, we're anxious and eager to, to engage the community and, and what it wants to do with this next step. So, so with that, I'll, I'll certainly open it up to any questions and we have the panel here, um, if there's any areas that touch on, on their particular expertise. So, thank you.
Yeah, I've got a, like, some questions on a couple, down a couple of different lines here. Uh, one about the deferred maintenance, so something I learned here new, which was nice to see is the success, um, facilities have had, or the facilities managers have had in kind of improving the state of our older buildings so that, you know, it's not necessarily a rebuild versus a continued refurbish type of conversation. So learned that, that, that is good, but the other side of that, I'm a little bit, I was adding up the deferred maintenance numbers as, as, uh, Mr. Sarah was going through them and I'm seeing fifty-five million dollars of total deferred maintenance items, which seems to be in line with what I recall from two thousand and eighteen. But in two thousand and eighteen, we had talked about, I believe, there were wants and needs. Is that fifty-five million and that, that those, the needs were probably tamped down a little bit, like thirty-five million? Is that fifty-five kind of an indication of the wants or the needs at, you know, two years later?
Um, as Dave makes his way, I, I, I think I pulled up that slide.
Yeah, the, the forty-five would be the needs.
So the, the needs are up too? The needs are, okay.
Yeah, and that was more of cost escalate, you know, just the, the rise in material price. So all of that was kind of factored into these numbers, um, as well of what you've completed. So the forty-five would be the, what you need to do, the additional fourteen would be what OFCC might recommend that we didn't think you as a district necessarily needed to do.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, I missed that slide, I was right there, so forty-five.
Yeah, the, the process that we use, we hired, um, so OFCC has a, a tool that was used in two thousand and five and it's used now. So we wanted to use that same tool when we evaluated our buildings. And no offense to Dave and his team, but they do work in the district, so we didn't feel that asking Dave to, to do the evaluation in his team. So we actually contracted, if you recall, with a architect firm in the Cleveland area that we would never use. So they have no stake in this and they did the evaluations. And then we asked Dave to come in knowing the buildings like he does to say, all right, using the OFCC, which is this, this tool, what are the things that we could maybe, you know, the generators and things like that, that they would require that we wouldn't have to do. And certainly these are things that we're dealing with today. So I don't want to give the impression that, you know, these are things that we know, we're, we're limping through with aged boilers, for example. This would say replacing that. Today, this winter, we're going to be using those boilers, we're going to do all that we can to keep them up and running. So, so those are the kinds of things that go into those numbers that, that based on, you know, when you're opening up the patient, these are things that you want to take a look at. Now, we might not realistically be able to fix all the parts of the patient while it's open, but let's fix the main organs, you know, and that's probably part of that problem solving that the committee would have to investigate in.
Just to piggyback off of that and Eric's, uh, comment too, so from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-one report, it's about seven million dollar change. So as we move forward here, it's interesting to point that out, that the buildings continue to need repair, although we've done a great job of keeping them functioning and running, but, uh, that, seven million dollars is a little bit of an expense.
Time is not our friend in this.
Right, that's right, yes, yes.
I'm not mistaken.
Last few years of construction escalation have been really, really, really high. That would average one and a half to two percent, we are seeing four or five percent.
Wow.
Uh, and not sure when that's going to stop, quite honestly.
And we have a PI and we're grateful for that. That's about one point six million. So when you think about how we strategically use that to move the needle in the buildings that need it the most, one point six million against, you know, forty, over forty million. So it goes a long way and we're not pulling that money out of our general fund, which is great for kids and programming, but, but we're getting to that point where that is not going to be able to keep up with the age of the buildings and.
Yeah, and you're seeing that empirically in the renovate versus rebuild numbers, which, which I do, I, I give a big nod, big credit to that. The second question I had, and Mr. Sarah, you touched upon it, uh, so, and where I know we're not, I don't want to focus too much on the how to pay for yet, but there are, you know, OFCC financing is, is, you know, a tool that a lot of districts have used to a lot of success, but I also understand, and you'd mentioned a couple, it comes with some additional kind of caveats, hooks.
It does.
It may not serve us best potentially. You'd mentioned new parking lots, which maybe we don't need. My understanding, as limited as it may be, is also that it deals with operating, you know, there's some backend operating costs that OFCC financing can also put a school district on the hook for. I don't know if you'd be prepared to kind of mention some of those today or maybe next time we do.
Yeah, I think next time, we've got some additional data that I can bring that kind of details what we've seen in other schools and the additional costs that come with receiving that funding. I think it'd be good to maybe see where you guys are. I think last time you checked, you're getting a very small percentage from OFCC. I, I think it was less than twenty percent or twelve percent. It was a pretty small match. You got to get in, into their system. Uh, it would, it takes two years just to get into their timeline and then from that point, it all depends on kind of the funding at, at the state level. So, you know, once you get in, you could still be five, seven, ten years down the road before, which again, just you see the cost and construction costs continuing to climb. They react to that a little, but they typically, especially in our Northwest Ohio market, don't react, um, as much as they should in terms of the cost increases. But I can provide, I could have additional information next time, Eric, to kind of walk through those items.
Yeah, that'd be great, yeah. It's a, what, what do we need first is the question? How, how do we get there?
Sure.
So, great, thank you.
Over the years, I've heard time and time again that schools are built for a fifty-year life. And like, at the junior high, we're past that fifty-year life. What does that mean, that schools are built for a fifty-year life?
I think it's the materials and the, how the, like, the, the junior high is all concrete. So the columns, the structure, the roof, everything's concrete, that's going to probably gain you some life expectancy over what we would do potentially today because that's just really not cost prohibitive to do that type. So the construction has changed to maybe kind of shorten. I still think we think fifty years is the target when we do a new building, but I think some of those older structures were more like hundred-year buildings because they invested at that time into much more robust structural systems. You got terrazzo floors there that you just can't afford to do elsewhere. So all of those type of things are gaining you years, um, in the life of a building that you just kind of can't traditionally afford, um, in today, in today's dollars.
So like, do we anticipate, I mean, this, this is a terrible question to ask, but do we anticipate tearing these buildings down or?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, that would be for, I think, the larger group. I think most of the buildings have good bones. I think there's maybe been, when Frank was built, I think there's a little bit of, that's where the construction of that school versus your other schools kind of changed a little bit and, you know, I, I don't know why the reasons that was built that way, but, you know, that's the one school that's, you know, kind of on that other spectrum. The other schools, I think, have really good bones and I don't think there's, would be in a need, quite honestly, to, to tear those down. They need improvements, like we've been talking, but to completely do a tear down and rebuild, to do that in today's dollars would be extremely high. I mean, uh, a, a new high school would probably be two hundred and ninety, I think I looked on OFCC's, uh, square footage is about two hundred and ninety-five dollars a square foot to build a new high school and you've got two hundred and twenty thousand square feet, so that's seventy million dollars. So I think it's going to be weighing those things. Um, it, it just might make it just almost impossible to get a community to support, spending seventy million dollars on a new high school when you wouldn't be able to touch any of other facilities potentially. So I think we'd have to weigh those, um, cost benefit analysis, uh, kind of moving forward.
It was really interesting, I was reading about Upper Arlington's new high school, which is state of the, state of the, state of the art. And how many, like, one wing is the Gretchen Downs wing and the next wing is the Eric Bennington wing and that's because people donated the money for all those wings and I thought, this is crazy. Crazy, but if you, if you look at pictures of the high school, the, the front foyer is prisms of varying shades of gold, glass, and I mean, it is, it's really astounding, but I can't imagine how much that school cost to build. And I'm trying to figure out who in Perrysburg wants to donate each wing.
I'm, I'm willing to look at the checkbook, but it might just be the Eric Bennington desk or I, I don't know.
With all those donations, their new high school cost over a hundred and ten million dollars. So I don't want to give the impression that everyone donated and the taxpayers, but just the high school to build that was over a hundred and ten million dollars, so.
But they have the luxury of having lots of rich people move back home. And, and they're the people like the, Mike Nugent moved back home to Upper Arlington and did a huge donation and I just think that's so interesting.
Yeah, I think they generated, I, I could be wrong, but somewhere about five million, four million, somewhere in that range of donations towards that building. So it's, you know, that's great. Um, and, and certainly we would take that in a heartbeat. We've appreciated our million dollar gift, so we know what goes into that. But in terms of the drop in the bucket, I mean, that's probably less than four percent of the total cost, so.
Wow.
But yeah, we'd be open to some different vendors perhaps.
Mr. Sarah, um, what's, uh, elementary costs?
Uh, because of the square footage, um, being smaller, typically that goes up a little bit. It was about three hundred and ten dollars, uh, a square foot for a new elementary school in the size, um, you know, that sixty, seventy thousand square foot potential range. And that, those costs all don't include land acquisition, so that is strictly kind of built cost and permitting and things like that, but you'd have some additional cost if you had to purchase land and get utilities and things like that to it as well.
What, what do, what's, what do people build elementaries now for, like, capacity wise? How many students typically?
Um, we're doing two at Washington Local now, there are seven hundred.
Seven hundred?
Yeah. But it ranges, I mean, the, part of the problem is the smaller you go, especially with the OFCC model, there's just not enough money. If, if you talk, they, you just, once you get that five hundred student and below, four hundred student below, it just, you as a district have to come up with so much additional dollars on top of what OFCC just, just built it. So there's a, um, you know, a little bit larger gives you some efficiencies with the cost and, and materials.
Washington Local's an OFCC project.
They are.
Yeah.
And they were, they were forced to, I mean, OFC kind of forces that too. They'll, I think they'll say they won't fund anything below a five or six hundred student elementary school now.
No, that makes sense though.
They've changed that to try to reduce the, the campus footprint and get less schools and, so.
Right. And then, so I understand this correctly, the next step in the process would be to get a group of people together or?
Yes. I mean, that's, I think, having a discussion about the problems and then seeing if that's the direction the board would like to go in. Um, and, and beginning to assemble a team of, of, you know, community members, parents, staff to begin to wrestle with those questions, yeah.
And how do, if people in the community want to get involved, what's, would they reach out to you? What, what's the next step?
Um, we would lay that out. The, if the board said, yes, let's, let's, let's put the team together, let's put the band back together, then we would begin to, you know, have a process where people would submit their names. That's what we did in two thousand and twelve. So part of it was seeking out people that had expertise in certain areas, others, you know, send, send your information and, and, you know, we had a lot of interest and we, you know, we can't have a committee of a thousand. So we had to, you know, go through a process to evaluate who would be on that team. So that's what, that's what we've done in the past.
Any other questions?
I might interject, um, quickly. On the, um, OFCC, Perrysburg is, um, the equity rate's four, four hundred and forty. So you're, not that you wouldn't take that into consideration, probably if you're funding the next couple of years, you're probably in the L program, which is if you fund it and get reimbursement when your number finally comes up. And I, I'm trying to find the exact percentage, but, uh, it's probably in that fifteen, twenty percent.
So are you telling me that if we would apply for this, then we, we would just build the school and eventually they would give us money back?
Yeah, and Dave would probably speak to this, but there's a, it's early, what's the word, stand for me, early, you end essentially financing the schools a hundred percent yourself and then you get, when your number finally comes up and the money's available, then you get reimbursed for it.
And, and after the school's built. So you have to build it completely to OFCC standards, they have to approve it. You've got to typically pass a levy to pay for the share they won't fund. And as long as you build it to their standards, after it's built, they'll come through, review it again, and then they'll reimburse the money back to the district.
Or they may not.
Or they, if they find.
They may say you didn't quite make the standards and.
And they're, and they're involved the whole time through. So as we were doing Washington Local, we were sending drawings that they were reviewing constantly and, and so they're, they're involved the whole way through. So unless you try to hide something, they're going to approve it, it's just, you don't get the money until the school's completely done, including furniture, all of that stuff. So it's, it could be a, after you pass a levy, it could be a four or five year process before you get the dollars back from OFCC.
Okay. Well, that's interesting.
And they won't fund certain things too, so.
Can you give an example of some of those kinds of things?
So like, on, on the lower grades, they won't fund putting bleachers in a gymnasium and they won't fund any type of athletic component that's not used for an educational purpose. They, they have really strict guidelines on materials, so you couldn't put terrazzo floors and they would say, you've got to pay for that increased cost out of your own dollars or metal roofs. And some of the things you did at the high school, they, they, they would flat out not refund, they, they wouldn't fund. And they would say, if you want those, you as a district have to come up with those additional dollars, uh, to pay for those. So there's a whole slew of, and I could, as Eric said, I can come back next time because we've got a pretty good analysis that we did. time, because we've got a pretty good analysis that we did of what we were required to do, what those costs were. And then I think you need to analyze the portion you're getting from them to determine, is it even worth, you know, doing that? Because you're going to be spending a bunch of additional dollars to follow their guidelines. And every building's got to be LEED certified. And we can do all the sustainable elements, but the paperwork and all of that stuff adds dollars. They make you reinforce all the roofs to put solar panels over them. I don't know any school district that's done that. But you're paying for increased steel sizes and things like that to potentially do that. So, there's a whole slew of those issues that I can bring with me next time to give you a better understanding.
Yeah, bottom, bottom line, I don't, I don't want to, you know, be, be negative on OFCC financing at all. But you end up getting more of a building than maybe you need and, and for a greater cost than maybe you're willing to do, potentially.
Yeah.
I think, I think there's a, there's a line there somewhere. I don't know where, where it is. If you're at five or six percent, you're probably not doing it. You're approaching twenty percent, then the discussion becomes a lot more difficult. Because you're on that, you're on that cost slope. The, the, the risk, the reward potentially of it.
Exactly.
It really depends on your project.
Yeah.
Question. By, by the time you get like a, a bond issue on, for a levy, and then you, like, build, what, what, what's that, like, timeline? Like, how many years are we talking?
It's probably about a year to design after a levy would pass. And depending on the size of the school, if it was an elementary, it might take eighteen months to build. So...
So, a year to design, a year to build. So, you're-
Probably a year design, year and a half to build.
Year and a half to build.
So, you're probably two and a half to three years. If it's a larger structure, then that construction duration's going to increase to maybe two years or two-plus years instead of a year and a half.
But, you know, that, that would be a nice thing to see for the next meeting, would be a kind of a timeline.
Yeah, timeline. Yeah, that's what I was thinking, for sure.
Yeah, it's, it's been nice that the board has been informed in the last four or five years on projects. Like, I've got the last couple of presentations we've had. So, it's not news to us totally. However, the public is, moves in, moves out, the communication out there. Because once you say, we're going to go for a new school, we're going to go for a new levy, oh, here we go again. We want some more money. Here they come again. Well, it's not new to us. It's new to them, perhaps. So, it's important for the Communications Committee and for this Board of Education to get the information out like we're doing today, we have been doing. So, it's not like a surprise to anybody that when the bond levy comes up. Knowing the previous high school that is old, twenty years old, the high school had, was defeated three times when it came to a levy request, three times. And committees met to build that building large enough for future expansion and the number of students that were coming in. But three times, they had to downsize the current high school. So, again, Tom, thanks for your, and Mr. Surti, for what you guys have done to keep us informed as a board. And now, we can need to continue to do that as board members for the community. Get that out there in the, in the media, and any type of information we can provide through our Communications Committee would be great. Any other questions?
No, but I, I still do call it the new high school as well. Because I went to what is the junior high. And I even say, when I say, oh, we're going to the junior high, I say, our old high school. So, my family knows to go to the correct building.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Brooke and Matt and James. Appreciate, appreciate your help.
Yeah, keeping it on the forefront's always so important, because it's a, a big task ahead of us, for sure. Mr. Huster, anything else?
No, that, that's it. And we'll, we'll get to work on the next presentation, you know, later this month. Thank you.
Such a nice way to have a board meeting, talk about educational things in board presentations versus some of the topics we've had in the past. Item number four, we have a couple items here for approval, for consideration, four-one and four-two. We have a motion to accept.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Downs?
Yes.
Mrs. Laramore?
Yes.
Mr. Bennington?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank?
Yes.
Mr. Paulman?
Yes. Motion carries. That takes us number five. I'll bring up for discussion. I want to point out, we might want to make a meeting time change or date change for November second. We have any, any discussion on that? I know, Mrs. Laramore, you brought that up.
Yeah, and because that falls on Election Day. And there are two of us on the board that are going to be a little busy that day. So, I was wondering if we could move that, because that will be prime, prime time for us to be busy.
So, the November second, you probably wouldn't want to meet at all that day? Probably the-
Yeah.
Day after, maybe?
Yeah, that day we'll be, we'll be busy. So, I mean-
And the, the November third date work with, for others, the board members?
The first.
Are we talking-
Yeah, what about the first?
Oh, the first, Monday?
Yeah.
Ray, are we still talking at seven-thirty in the morning?
Yes. Mm-hmm. Different day, same time.
So, for me, that week works better than the following week. I'll be traveling. So, first, second, third works well for me, or first or third works well.
It's good for you, Tom, you and administration, the first or third.
We'll, we'll make either work.
Yeah, the first would be better for me, because I'm not, I don't work on Mondays. And the third, I've got the morning off, but I have to go get my signs. So, that was my sign-clearing time. So, I, I would like to offer the first.
So, Downs, okay with the first?
I'm good with the first.
So, you think, good?
Yes, I'm good for, with the first as well.
Okay. Let's change that date then for our next work session, from the second of November to the first of November at seven-thirty. Okay, good. Anybody else have anything else to bring up?
I had, I had two questions. Can, can we confirm our, our policy with PCR test? I got an email and a phone call yesterday about what the district is requiring for those home kits that we were passing out, the libraries passing out. Because I didn't get any communication on that. And all of a sudden, I've got people asking me questions about that. Are we not accepting those anymore?
I'll have to get back to you on that. No, we, we are.
Oh, okay.
So, but there's certain, let me get back to you on that. There's certain symptomatic, asymptomatic, and I don't have it off the top of my head, so I'm not prepared to answer that. But, yeah, they're still in play. So...
Okay, okay. And then, my other question, are, are we still using FrontPath? I read an article today in The Blade about-
Yeah.
-FrontPath.
So, the board voted to move from FrontPath to Medical Mutual at the last board meeting. So, we'll make it transition-
Is it effective immediately, or?
I'm sorry?
Was that effective?
No, it, there's a transitional period. So, you guys approved it to be on, starting in January.
Okay. On that PCR question, I, I looked that up for her, because I got the email too. I looked that up for her and the, the guidelines on, on our information, on our, on our policy. I don't, that's not the right word.
Guideline, yeah.
The, the guideline, but it was our, our sheet that had all the highlights on it that showed what we were going to do. And it said, in order to come back, you had to have the PCR antigen test. And I thought, okay, well, there's the PCR. We're saying that you have to have the PCR. And I wasn't sure, is the antigen test, is that the one that's testing for antibodies? Is that, I don't even know what an antigen test is.
So, the antigen test, think of it as, in most cases, as the rapid test. So, it's not the antibody, but it's an antigen test that is a rapid test.
Oh, okay. So, then, the one that she submitted would then-
So, there's, without, we, we'd have to kind of dig into it. There's a couple of things that, without knowing the details. The PCR is, is considered to be the gold standard. That's the most accurate, reliable test. That's what you get when you go to the doctors and, well, you know, when, when you go and they send it away and they get it, but you get it back a day or two later, that's the PCR test.
Okay.
The antigen test is the one you do at home. So, we've had some situations where people have taken the test at home and have not followed the instructions that you have to with the kit. So, they've taken the test, taken a picture of the results, and then said, here are the results. And that's not acceptable. You have to go through the process where you log on. There's somebody that watches you. You have to hold up your ID. And there's a whole process. So, we've had some people that said, we, we didn't do that process. So, we haven't been able to accept those cases.
Oh.
When someone is symptomatic, that's, that's the part I need to, to look at. Because they're, they're, you know, we, we essentially follow what the county permits in terms of, you know, getting back from quarantine. So, so whatever we do is aligned with what the county does. And, and so, without knowing the specifics, because everyone has different situations. And if you leave one part out, like, I didn't log on, I didn't submit the, you know, you print out that you're, that it's you and you did our negative. If you, if you miss that step, then yeah, we're not doing it. And we've had some parents say, but we did the test. We understand that. But the county requires this process to be completed. So, so I'm not sure of the details. I'll have to get those.
Okay.
And be happy to respond.
All right, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, some clarity would be good. I just had to take the, that antigen, the Abbott Labs quick test yesterday for a work reason. And, you know, it's, it's only a fifteen-minute process to kind of follow the steps in there. And I'm not going to pull it up. But I did pass.
But you had somebody that walked you through it.
I had somebody that walked me through it. And again, it was, you know, the longest, the, the, the most inconvenient, for lack of a better word, is that the test takes fifteen minutes to kind of go through what it has to go through. And then you got to show it to the, the person on the camera. It's actually a pretty cool process. But, and it's not that lengthy. It's not that difficult.
Well, I, I took it, took one also. And I thought, and first of all, you have to put an app on your phone.
Yep.
Yeah.
And I didn't understand how to do that. And the whole thing was, I thought, was really hard to do. But once we finally got started, it was easy.
Very.
But I also wondered, all this information goes into a national database. Is that correct? It seemed to me that they were tracking this information for everybody.
I would assume they are.
I think anything on an app, they track, yeah.
I'm not sure, you know, I'm not sure-
I'd say yes.
-who has access to that.
That's a little creepy.
Oh, I thought it was too. But, but I thought, well, that's how you know the spread. If you can follow every test that's given, you can, computers should be able to, to say, well, this is the hotspot and that sort of thing. So, I, it was interesting.
I think if anyone has questions, I think, you know, call the Health Department. You know, I, I would, I would, I would recommend, if you've already gone through, heard from the COVID team here, you have questions or you are contesting what they're telling you, call the Health Department. They are the absolute authority. They clear people, we don't. So, we work under their guidance. So, anyone who has questions, call the Health Department. And if you've called the Health Department and you don't like their answer, we can't help you. So, that's the other piece of that. So, if, if you don't like the answer you're getting and you've called the Health Department, then they're, they're the boss. So...
Okay, at this time, we'll see you on the eighteenth. But we'll need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Call, please.
Mr. Bennington?
Yes.
Mrs. Laramore?
Yes.
This is Eubank?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Paulman?
Yes.